...Auburn, New Blaster, Portland, Minnetonka, and Kent Falls. And I'm the Senate Chairman for the Committee and will be presiding today over this public hearing work to take up and the following work sessions to ensue. So we will begin the work session on LV 13 -- I'm sorry, the public hearing on LV 1392. This is an Act to amend the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act. This is a Department bill and be presented by Representative Sanders. Welcome, Representative Sanders. And just a couple of Housekeeping notices, since I'm not going to go through the whole usual spiel on public hearing before, I'm just going to keep it brief because I think most people here have been through this before. But we would ask that when you -- if you've come up to testify, you please sign in. If you have written testimony, we've heard if you had 20 copies, but whatever you have, you give it to our committee clerk, Annie Lori Buxman, and she'll distribute it to us. We are going to have, and we always do employ in this committee, a time limit on public testimony. This is to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to speak. That will be set at three minutes. There'll be a clock that counts down. If you get to your three minutes and you haven't finished, we're going to ask you to please wrap up. But we'd appreciate if you're conscious of that as you're delivering your testimony. If you can't -- don't finish your testimony in that time. If you have a written copy, we will have it available and we will read it as we consider these proposals. Also, if the committee has any questions for you, we'll have the opportunity to ask you those questions and that will count against your time. So, all right, I'll begin. Thank you, Representative Sanders.
Thank you, Senator. I'm Representative Deb Sanderson. I represent District 88, which is Chelsea, Whitefield, Jefferson, and part of Noble Borough. And it's my pleasure today to present LD 1392 on behalf of the Department, an Act to amend the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act. I do not have written testimony because this is a fairly recent bill out. I thought it would be important to just kind of go through areas that I feel either need clarification or something from the Department as we go through this. And so we can start right on the first page. One of the areas of concern is, oh, first of all, I really do thank the Department for coming through, bringing forward this bill. I know there are areas of concern that we'll cover in here that has prompted the Department to make some of these changes, and they are valid concerns. And I also know the Department is working very hard to make sure that not only do we continue to have the best medical marijuana program in the country, but also that our compliance with this program keeps it there as well. So on page one in Section 116 NRS-A, 1A, this is Title 16. This is really not the jurisdiction of this committee, which concerns me that we're making areas in here. And I'm not quite sure exactly what the Department wants with this information, whether they want to be able to hold this and keep limited data on this thing. I think that's maybe a question that we need to have. But when we're going through this bill, there are areas where the Department is saying -- where are we going? I'm going to go through. On page 16A, "Primary Caregiver." A corporation, facility, institution, public or private agency may not be a primary caregiver. I understand that the Department is going with this bill. However, in the age of where we're starting to have small businesses, I would urge the committee to maybe question what the intent behind that is. In the bill, page one. Page one.
So that slides 28 and 29 on page one?
Yes. On page two, line 715, "Visiting Qualifying Patients." The Department certainly has indeed had issues with people coming into our state and receiving marijuana under the premises of a primary caregiver. And I support their intent to strengthen that. But I'm not sure how they're going to be able to -- it would be interesting to hear from the Department on how they expect to enforce that not less than 24 consecutive hours piece. But that is a piece that I do strongly support the Department in this effort. When we look at Section 11 on page three, lines three and four, H. In current statute, excess prepared marijuana is allowed to be given to a qualifying patient if nothing of value is provided. However, in this language, it seems as though it means you can only get the excess -- the qualifying patient can only receive the excess -- the caregivers and dispensaries can only give the excess to someone who is already a qualifying patient of theirs. So that may need a little more clarification. Section 15 on page three, lines 36, starting at 38. Currently -- and then going on to page four, starting on lines one. Currently, a family member is allowed to grow without being a registered primary caregiver for a family member. I know the Department has had some issues with this, all of a sudden having some very large families. And I certainly respect and accept the fact that there are very few who, certainly not the vast majority of individuals, may have tried to take advantage of this loophole. So I do support the Department's attempt to limit this. However, I would feel it's important that maybe we still honor, in our deliberations, the committee's deliberations of this, that we still honor that family connection. And I would suggest a limit of two family members on that. Looking at page six. Right here, the Department has added new language, including, "Or based on a failure of the applicant to comply with this chapter or rules adopted pursuant to the chapter, if the applicant has acted in bad faith with respect to the laws and rules governing the medical use of marijuana." The inclusion of this language, it seems a bit redundant because based on current law, they would already be out of compliance. So I believe it would be up to the committee whether you want to accept this language or maybe have the Department question why they would actually need to have this in On page eight, line 16. It says, "Fees are nonrefundable except that an unsuccessful applicant for a dispensary certificate of registration must be refunded the application fee less $1,000." Was my understanding, and I may be wrong, in the Department certainly clarified this, that that was already the practice. But what I'm wondering is, does that also include caregivers at this time? On page nine, lines 31, "Revocation of a Caregiver Certification Card." Part B just may need to be clarified, that if the caregiver is also a patient, perhaps they would not be required to dispose of medical marijuana that is allowed for their own personal use, because anyone growing for their own personal use is not required at this time to register as a caregiver. On page 10 in the bill, "Under Compliance." I strongly support allowing the Department to have some teeth in order to find compliance within this bill, within this program. One question I would have is that under lines 13 for registered primary caregiver penalties and the subsequent three sections after that, three, four, and five, this is on page 10, it says, "Each day of violation constitutes a separate offense." It would be my indication that this may be, even though I understand what the Department is trying to do with this, we already have a per-day language in there. So I wonder if that may be redundant. While I strongly support the Department having the ability to strengthen compliance in these laws, on page 11, I would ask the committee to be aware, on lines four through eight, that when an injunction, the language reads, "When an injunction is then issued according to this chapter, the district court may order the registered primary caregiver or dispensary or person or entity subject to the injunction to pay the general fund, the cost of investigations incurred by the Office of Attorney General and the cost of suit, including attorney's fees." At this time, any other licensing entity that I know of, and certainly the Department can correct me if I'm wrong, that there usually is a finding and at that time maybe a corrective action plan put out there, giving these entities an opportunity to make corrections. Most people are trying to work in compliance again. And during the course of inspections, which pertain to other bills, something is found. I think these people ought to be given the opportunity to have a corrective action plan, come back in compliance, and then if they are not, certainly something that strongly needs to be done. But I think that language needs to be questioned at this time. Overall, I strongly support the Department, again, having the teeth and the abilities to bring more compliance and more oversight into this program. I think it is a good program. I think more oversight in this program will only make it better. And again, though the vast majority of individuals who do operate under this program are doing so legally and living in law, we do have some that are not, and they are taking advantage of it. And that makes it -- and that shines upon those who are operating legally and living in law. So I give this over to the committee to work it at this time. And those are just the issues with the Department bill that I think even need clarification or maybe a little tweaking. I don't think that's anything that we can't work through together with this. And I'd be happy to have any questions at this time.
Questions for Representative Sanders. Representative Malaby.
Thank you, Representative Malaby. Thank you, Representative Malaby, for bringing this forward. What you discussed were, for lack of a better word, exceptions to problems that you had with the bill. Can I infer, as you just stated, are you substantively in agreement with the direction of this?
I am in agreement with the direction of this bill. I am in agreement with the Department having the ability to strengthen their oversight of this program. And with the exception of these few little tweaks here that I need to be done, that I feel need to be addressed, because -- and normally I would not present a bill in this manner. However, because it was just brought out this week, because it is so new and so many people have not had an opportunity to really comb through this, I felt it was important to be able to, you know, address some of these concerns as the presenter of the bill, where I saw there may be some complications or perhaps further explanation on behalf of the Department needed today during the public hearing.
One quick thing. I think considering the nature of this bill and considering the nature of your situation as the sponsor of it and considering it being a Department bill, normally the rules the committee would be such that a sponsor can't ask questions in public testimony on this. But I'd like to ask the committee for permission to, if without objection, if we would suspend the rules in this particular case so that Representative Sanders might be able to ask the Department some of these questions when they come up to testify. Representative Sanders?
Thank you. And again, I generally think that's fine. Is the plan that we're going to work this bill today also?
With all due respect, Senator, it would be my request, we're working all the other bills, and I know we wanted to put this public hearing this morning before we entered the work session on all the other bills. And so we would have the opportunity to know what the Department was going to put forth. It would be my desire at the chair's lead to let's work the other bills, but let's also have an opportunity to have this own separate section. So if there is our details that need to be ironed out with the Department to, you know, where we can perhaps come to agreement on some of the issues that jumped out at me, that we would have a better opportunity to do so.
I was just going to guess that if we're going to have a work session on this bill today, and just that we have a work session on it doesn't mean we have to move it, right? I was just going to suggest that if we're also going to be working this today, there's going to be opportunity to ask you. So I'd like to try to keep those questions to, you know, I think it's important for us to get to the work session on the bills as soon as we can.
That's a very good point. So perhaps a need for questions on this bill may not be as necessary in light of the fact that we will also have the opportunity to work with today. So how about any additional questions from the committee? See no additional questions? Thank you very much, Representative Sanders. Are there any legislative postponts? Well, legislative postponts.
And the tooth back on.
I think our new member needs to introduce himself.
Yeah, my name's Peter Stuckey. I represent House District 42, which is part of Portland. And when I left, I was missing a tooth.
We had poker.
Representative Stuckey, you are looking very snazzy today. And was there anyone else? Representative Bashman, did you have an opinion?
Good morning. I'm Karen Dashon. I represent House District 29, which is close to Scarborough.
Senator, ask the magistrates for the request for part of Portland.
You look snazzy, too.
By the way, we should just compliment Representative Stuckey. He looks snazzy, but we're all a little bit snazzy today. Everyone can give themselves a pat on the back. And everyone else is looking snazzy. All right. All joking aside, let's move forward. So next, we'd like to hear from proponents of the bill.
Good morning, Senator Ray. Representative Sanders, members of the committee. My name is Ken Albert. I'm Director for the Division of -- well, Director for Senate for Disease and Bill Prevention, formerly Division of Licensing Regulatory Services. I'm here today to testify in support of LD 1392, an agency bill submitted on behalf of the Department. As you know, the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act is dynamic and has been amended many times over the years to reflect our better understanding of a patient's need for safe medicine and the role of dispensaries and caregivers designated by patients to cultivate marijuana for them, in the hope to convey the content of this lengthy bill in orderly fashion of arranging my testimony by topic. Definitions. For clarity and to avoid confusion, we have added or amended several definitions. For example, the definition of primary caregiver is amended to make clear that only an individual may become a primary caregiver to assist qualifying patients. A corporation, facility, or institution may not be a primary caregiver. Other outdated definitions are updated to align with multiple changes made to the law over the years. For example, all references to registered patients have been deleted from the law since patients do not have to register any longer. Voluntary patient registration and its issuance of registered identification cards to qualifying patients are discontinued. In its place, medical providers issue a medical certification card to each patient they certify. Prepared marijuana. This bill clarifies that a qualifying patient may only accept excess prepared marijuana from their designated primary caregiver or their designated registered dispensary. Otherwise, a caregiver or dispensary may dispense to patients who have not designated that. That is contradictory with the law. The law prohibits dispensing to non-designated qualifying patients. The bill aligns the dispensing requirements for dispensaries and primary caregivers. Also, a maximum of 2.5 ounces of prepared marijuana may be dispensed during a 15-day period. That's clarified in the law. All primary caregivers must register. The three exceptions are covered. But as Representative Sanders pointed out, we are certainly open to discussing that in the work session. Visiting qualifying patient. We have had problems in the state. I'm not going to read this portion of testimony. Just suffice it to say, our enforcement authority would be with regard to complaints that come into us by law enforcement officers outside or inside the state who have identified somebody exiting the state who has not allowed them in here for 24 hours. And we respectfully note that there is, there are a few technical -- this bill did move very quickly, so there are some changes that the Department would even amend from the other reviser's office. There was a typographical error in Section 18 of the bill. Paragraph one is wrongly identified as new underlined when it's actually current law. So we'll talk about that as well. Time limits on reapplication after denial or revocation. When a registered identification card has been denied or revoked on one occasion, an individual may not reapply for a period of one year from that effective date. The same for the second offense, they would not be allowed to reapply for two years. And reapplication, if that occurs on a third time, they would not be allowed, it's a pre-strike rule essentially, for a period of three years.
Great time, but I'm going to ask you to continue as my first question.
It was a quick three minutes.
Yeah, it was. Since you're helping walk us through this, I'm going to ask, could you please share with us a little bit of your testimony?
Sure. Access to cultivation facility. We've had many discussions in this committee over the years, and we add language in the bill that would allow municipal officials into cultivation facilities to further the work of the municipality, clearly. That would need to follow all, you know, requirements for guarding and to prevent any contamination of the facility, as it would for EMS personnel or any other, or elected official who was invited into a cultivation area. Compliance. To ensure compliance, the bill includes the imposition of injunctive relief, fines, and penalties. A repeat offense is a class D crime, as are other repeat offenses within the bill already. Registered primary caregivers, registered dispensaries, and those who engage in activities only authorized for the registered primary caregiver or registered dispensaries are subject to fines and penalties and arrest for class D crime. We offer the following friendly amendments, and this is where I think we'll make many corrections in the bill. Section 19 of the bill fails to include an employee of a registered primary caregiver. This should be amended to capture this entity within the ambit of rulemaking for the issuance of identification cards. I think that was an oversight. Section 21 of the bill should have repealed only the requirement that a card be issued to a minor qualifying patient. The rest of the law remains unchanged, which would be the law requiring physicians to discuss with the parents the risks and benefits associated with use of medical marijuana and so forth. Section 24 of the bill, in the last sentence of the first paragraph, describes current law that requires the expiration date of the registered primary caregiver's registration card to be the same as the issuance and expiration date on the patient's registered identification card. This is old language that should have been repealed long ago. Accordingly, the Department seeks to repeal this specific language, but we no longer have that information, nor do we require it. Section 32 of the bill is also old language correlating to a time when the Department registered patients. Given the current law prohibits the Department from doing so, the Department no longer maintains the information necessary to comply with this provision. It should also be noted that paragraphs six and 10 in the summary are incorrect on their face. So paragraph six notes that a qualifying patient may accept excess prepared marijuana from the qualifying patient's registered dispensary in addition to accepting it from a qualifying patient's primary caregiver. We don't know where this language came from. It's not part of the law at all. It's not part of the proposed law, and it's inaccurate. The bill does not do this. Further, a qualifying patient may only designate one source, other than themselves, of course, may only designate one source for cultivation of marijuana, either a caregiver or a dispensary. Paragraph 10 identifies scenarios under which a primary caregiver would not have to register to cultivate marijuana. This bill actually aims to repeal such language and requires a caregiver to designate, excuse me, such language and requires any caregiver designated to cultivate marijuana to register with the Department. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to address any questions at this time.
Questions. Representative Landry.
Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning.
How does this happen? How do you develop a new set of rules like this as we go along? You know, this is all new and interesting stuff to me, that, you know, we're in uncharted waters and we're moving along. And so when you come up, when the Department comes up with a document like this, I see that some of these are amended, old language that just doesn't make sense anymore, and so that needs to be changed. What else thoughts go into a document like this? And who sits around and chews on this?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have a legislative parking lot. So as the Department, as the division comes up with issues with any program, over time, we give the issues to our policy analysts. They put them on a parking lot. And then when it comes time to draft bills, we get together with program manager, Commissioner's office, and Governor's office, really work through what issues we really do want to present to the legislature, what, you know, what's most important to us. In this case, what we submitted and then what ultimately came out of the reviser's office, the sausage-making machine, it looks very different. So, and it was a very quick turnaround. So that's why we're proposing some amendments, some changes here.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So what's the thinking behind the proposed elimination of the voluntary patient registration? What's?
Well, the Department really wants to remove itself entirely from the relationship between the patient and the provider, the physician or the practitioner. And the numbers were really declining anyways, and so we thought we'd clean the language up. And because of the new, we'll share with you later, there's new provisions to allow a registered patient or to allow a patient to carry, to have a card on them for identification. That was the primary purpose, really, that a patient would register with the government, was to get that card. So when they had and they contacted law enforcement or anybody else who needed to have that as a source of identification, they would have it on their person as opposed to a large paper that they folded up and would get wrinkled or destroyed. So with the new mechanism in place for a provider to be able to administer at the point of care a certification card, the need for, to have a patient convinced of the government to register is no longer there.
I have a couple of other questions, but first, Representative Head, Representative Bursting, then I'll come back to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. The access to the cultivation facility, are there some more details to that somewhere as far as the plant damage and things like that that we've heard from people? A little better definition to access?
That has not been incorporated actually into any regulation. Generally, what I see occurring is whatever the caregiver or dispensary requests of the person entering will be abided by. Whatever procedures they use to protect their own cultivation facility, we abide by. I know that there's been lots of discussion about that over the many years here with committees. Last year, this committee approved adding elected officials to be able to access at the invitation. And so it's really about whatever the individual cultivator requests of us.
And that would be written in somewhere?
We could do it in law. We could do it in rule.
Yeah. I believe it needs to be somewhere to protect their crop, and not just.
And I would also, thank you, Representative Head. And I would also suggest that we should talk about the reasonableness of that language, too.
Yes.
It could be so broad in scope that it would be prohibitive.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Yes, Representative Bursting.
Thank you, Senator. Good morning, Mr. Albert. I've got two questions. Under this part, it says all primary caregivers must register. You said three exceptions were repealed. What were those exceptions?
There was, I'm going to have to look into that for you. I don't have that one in my head. It was, unless.
It's on page four of the bill. That's the top.
Thank you.
Also, okay. And then my next question is, you just stated that you want to get out of the relationship between the nurse practitioner or doctor and the caregiver. But in here, didn't we read that you want, the Department wants all the information online with this online portal? You want all the required providers, you're requiring providers to be on this online online portal for data. So can you explain that to me?
Yes, I think that's not in this bill. There's a bill that will be worked later on this morning that addresses that specifically. We've actually invited in for me, who's the system architect, so approved by the legislature, to be here to explain specifically how that works. We also have representatives from the department here, too. You all asked for the certification itself, if you want to see that, the cards and how that works, but basically, there is no, it's a PDF, so it comes up on a screen, and there's no cookies, there's no saving of any data. The data gets entered in into the certification process. It populates then the cards that are given to the patient. When the provider hits print, everything, so it's never sent over to the internet. When the provider hits print, everything goes away. It prints, all the data kills, go away, except for the zip code, and it captures information about whether or not the individual's over 18 or under 18. It doesn't capture the date of birth specifically, so, and that's what the information we extract. So, and it converts the zip code into a county for us, so we get the zip code, county, the provider's name, and the over or under. So we're not asking to collect data. We don't want to collect data. We don't want to hold that data. There was a situation in Oregon where the federal government submitted a request, subpoenaed some patient information. We do not want to find this data in any of that situation.
So a couple of questions I have. First of all, back to, so Representative Burstein began to get on, which is the family, as Representative Sanderson spoke of this, too. So eliminating the family exemptions for exempting people to have access to register. So I guess, hearing Representative Sanderson frame it, it seems like there have been, I think I remember you said, it seems like certain families seem to be a lot bigger than you would expect.
Frathouses or...
Does a two-family member limit, does that help address the concerns you have there? We were going that route, like Representative Sanderson had suggested.
Had we talked about that in work session.
Okay, all right. The other thing, when we go to the compliance section, and again, a lot of this is very new for me, so I'm just picking things up as I go along. So creating a class D crime, what are some of the things that individuals, what are some of the things that would find people, people would be out of compliance by doing or not doing that would qualify with this class D crime, and what are the potential penalties for a class D crime?
I can get you that information, but what the class D crime refers to here is if you've been found in violation of this already, and you've been going through either civil or criminal proceedings associated with this, with violation, that subsequent offense would then be a class D crime, so it's not the first time around, but with regards to...
So it's about repeated offense?
Correct.
So that would be maybe someone who is selling over a patient limit, or people are just trying to sell stuff on the black market, or is this what we're...
Certainly, the department's concern here is that we have some caregivers who are moving themselves out essentially as dispensaries. They're cultivating on a larger scale. They have signage, they have websites.
They're collected, we do talk about.
But even individual caregivers who are serving many more patients than they're authorized, they're cultivating many more clients than they're authorized to do, they're advertising, they were, they're using actually the word dispensary in their online advertising, so it's really false advertising, so those are the individuals that we really are ultimately concerned with.
Okay. Representative Burstein?
Thank you, Senator. Just one other question, just to all clear here, because this, just given this, I'd love some time to review this. The provider, I see a patient as a nurse practitioner. I'm the provider, correct? And then when I say this person needs, would like medical marijuana, I go in, enter this data on this PDF, I print it out, and give them the card at that time. Is that correct?
That is.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Teague?
Thank you, Mr. Albert Rice. I haven't spent a lot of time, just, whether it's I listened to Representative Sanderson's testimony, but I have a handful of specific things that I would just ask. But one of the first sections of the bill, government, it seems to add a government agency responsible for administrate Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act to part of the court procedure section in Title 16. And I like to understand the department's reasoning around that. I look at the other exceptions, they seem to be, so the way I understand it is this section of the court procedure allows investigative materials to be shared with certain entities. When I look at all of the other exceptions here, they really are targeted towards sharing information in situations where there's a concern for gender abuse, other than violent sexual abuse, child or adult abuse. This doesn't really seem to fit that all, so I'd like to understand the context behind that.
I also believe, Representative Teague, that within the ambit of that statute is contemplated investigative reports of law enforcement, that they will be accepted. This came out of some meetings with the attorney general's office, the assistant attorney general specifically represents NDPA, and the concern there is that the department would like to be able to use those reports, those investigative reports that are generated from NDPA to prosecute administratively, and what the concern there is, because of the nature of the report, if it's not accepted within the statute, they would, that, those types of reports are protected under FOIA.
Right.
And so they're concerned if they share those reports with us, that they're subject to waiver of FOIA across the board. So that's why this language is just to allow the department to use investigative reports to take administrative action against the caregiver or dispenser.
Right, but it seems to be, we have to run this work session, so there's the entity passing the report over, and there's the entity receiving, and you're asking that the department be...